Why now? So don't get a home. I don't know what's ready to do.
Council will go ahead and call this meeting to order for the record. It is Pi Day, three fourteen twenty-three. At four thirty-three P. M. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Ministerator.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
No changes for this afternoon's agenda, so I move approval of the agenda as published.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. You guys have it, and the agenda is adopted. First item up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. You guys have it, and the consent agenda was agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, and for the record, council and pro is here. We will move on to department commission reports. The first one up is the proclamation for procurement month. If I could have Darren and Keith join me at the podium, that would be great. Come on. So it's a great to once again come together and have everyone in the audience be here for this momentous occasion since you are purchasing for many of them for the work that you do, but we truly do have the best procurement team in the state of Idaho. They're leaders in legislation and leaders in getting work accomplished, because I think we do as much work as, quite frankly, anybody in the state of Idaho, but this is procurement month, so we will go ahead and do, read the proclamation, then turn it over for any comments you'd like to make from that standpoint. So whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business, and whereas in addition to the purchase of goods and services, procurement adds value to the organization by performing such functions as executing, implementing and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationships with suppliers and departments within the organization. Whereas Idaho government procurement professionals dedicate themselves to providing the best value for every taxpayer dollar and continue to expand their knowledge, skills, and abilities. And whereas the Idaho Public Purchasing Association, IPPA, through its members is committed to providing high caliber strategic logistical and operational support of all agencies associated with the chapter. And whereas the IPPA recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by the Institute for Public Procurement. Therefore, I, Mayor Robert E. Simpson, hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-three as procurement month in the city of Meridian, and urge the residents of our community to join the Idaho Public Purchasing Association in recognizing the role of the purchasing and materials management profession within business, industry, and government dated this fourteenth day of March twenty twenty-three. So Keith, Darren, thank you for all you do, and appreciate this and with this proclamation, I'll turn it over to you.
I just want to say thanks to all the employees and our council. You guys have always been good supporters of us. I also want to introduce Darren, because a lot of you probably haven't met Darren. This is our buyer Darren Brasser. He started, came on in July. He hasn't had the opportunity to come up and speak or present anything yet, but we're getting there. But once again, thanks to everybody. Thanks for your patience. We know that it's been a tough year last year, and things are looking up for us, so I appreciate the support. Thank you, Mayor.
And with that, we'll move on to item eight, which is Solid Waste Advisory Commission fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget amendment in the amount of ninety-four hundred for Solid Waste Advisor Commission Community Recycling Projects. I'll turn this over to Mr. Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I stand here before you representing the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. My name is Steve Corey, and I'm chair. On behalf of SWAC, we're recommending the use of some of the community recycling fund program funds to cover costs for the squishy water bottle and glass programs that are run over at the Meridian Transfer Station. You've been given a pretty good background memorandum with a lot of the discussion about the two programs. And I want to thank Public Works for putting that together for you. We've, we as SWAC have come to understand that there are many citizens that appreciate these programs, and we think that they ought to continue in FY twenty twenty-four, I guess it would be. And with that, I'm not going to go ahead and dwell on the details. I'm going to just make myself available for questions if you have any questions on the memorandum.
Thank you, Steve. Counsel, any questions at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor, Mr. Chair.
I'm not a question, just a comment. I think it's great, Chairman Corey, that we're using the recycling fund revenue to help support the recycling programs. It makes logical sense to me. My only question was just the contamination situation kind of at that transfer station there. We seeing that in the glass and squishy water bottles, or are those still working out pretty well?
On the glass, yes, it's been pretty clean on that. That works out rather well, because they've got to go ahead and crush the glass to go ahead and load it, ship it out of the city, so it does get a pretty thorough check on it. The plastic had some issues last year. One load had to be diverted, but four of the loads went across and got included in the system, and we do indeed think we've got it under control now with the signage, new signage and regular checks out there and that the stream has cleaned up and is clean enough.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor, Mr. Chair.
That's good to hear. Just the memo says that this is a budget amendment for FY twenty-three, and then I'm assuming you'll continue something similar for twenty-four, but just wanted to check that since you mentioned it.
You are correct. Yeah, I probably misspoke on that. We're talking about FY twenty-three and we'll take a look at it through this year. There may be other ways to look at this, but yeah, if there's nothing else on it, I think this is a good recommendation for use of CFRP funds.
Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions? Or do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor, Mr. Chair.
I move that we approve item E, the fiscal year twenty-three budget amendment in the amount of nine thousand four hundred for the community recycling projects.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion in a couple of seconds. Is there any discussion? If not, we're called the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, straighter.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Burrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the amendment is agreed to. Thank you, Steve. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to item nine, which is the Meridian Fire Department Fire Station seven and eight construction update. And we'll see that we have Deputy Chief Butterfield here for an update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I have a brief update for you to bring you up to speed on where we're at with Fire Station seven and eight in the construction phase, so. I'll start with the Fire Station seven. Right now, we are looking at forty-six percent completed. As you can tell by the picture on your screen, we do have the roof sheathing is being completed down there. MEP mechanical, electrical, and plumbing rough in on the interior. Most of the interior stud walls have been built, and so we're moving through that phase. And we're starting the site grading all around for parking lots and getting prepared for what will be the future landscape. Currently on budget was Station seven. No concerns with where we're at budgetarily on that. And our completion schedule for Station seven, late September, early October twenty twenty-three. We're still tracking pretty well from where we initially started out as well on that. And Recreation Ave, which is that road that will access this and also access the park on the east side of the station is currently being inspected as well. Fire Station eight, we're at forty-one percent complete. Trusses are being installed right now. MEP mechanical, electrical, and plumbing is being roughed in as well on the inside, and we're going to start the grading on that site at the end of this month. Budget, we're tracking on budget. No concerns with the budget my perspective. Completion schedule did have about twenty days delay on the CMU delivery, the block, just with supply chain issues. We're doing our best to kind of catch up, but right now we're tracking about two weeks, little over two weeks behind. But we still are on track for a late September, mid-October twenty twenty-three opening for that station as well. As it relates to our onboarding of personnel, I know this isn't necessarily the construction piece, but I do want to update council, because we are bringing on a total of thirty personnel for these stations. So two lateral fire academies have been completed, so we do have fifteen personnel that have been onboarded. And then the next sixteen that we have, we did have one person that did resign, so we did pick them up, add them to our academy. That academy will start in April, and that is a sixteen-week full academy for those people, so we're tracking really onboard for the schedule as it relates to the onboarding of staff, getting these new stations built on time as well. And certainly, I want to give a lot of thanks to the training division, which is working exceptionally hard to make sure that we're getting all of these people, the right people on our department, trained and ready. So once those stations are up and running, we'll have all the personnel. And then in closing, multiple teams of people every day, working a lot of hours to make sure that these projects are coming in on budget, on time as best as we can, and working to make sure that we do ultimately have the finest fire stations the state of Idaho. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Charlie. I know it's pretty quick, but I think if the pertinent information was hopefully delivered, council questions for the fire department or members of the team that are here supporting him.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor, Mr. Chair.
Um, thanks. Just curious, how are we utilizing this enhanced staffing in the meantime? Are we you know, ramping up our teams on kind of a pilot for certain stations to see if having larger crews is helpful, or how are we deploying the extra staff between the time that they're trained and the time that we open?
Yeah, absolutely. A council member straighter. We're actually moving to four-person staffing on the engines. So minimum is three staffing, so most of our engines right now are running.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor, Mr. Chair.
It'd be great if you guys could track the data along with that on our responses and stuff, just to see if having that enhanced staffing helps. Thanks. Mr. Mayor.
Councilor, Pro.
I don't have any questions. I did receive an update on this from Chief Bloom yesterday, and just want to give a big kudos to the fire department as they are being creative about the resources that have been needed to train these individuals from transportation to the different facilities to trying to get them showered and changed and all the things for that they're doing as part of their training. So I know you guys have been really resourceful and try to minimize the costs associated with that as much as possible. So thank you for being efficient and effective in that process.
And if I could just add one little thing, well, the way we're not over the finish line yet, I would say we're ninety-five percent with the county on being able to have the agreement in place that will put in their ambulances that will run from these two locations. So we are looking forward to seeing that implement as well, which is a great advantage to all of our community to be able to have that deployment. So hopefully we'll be seeing that sometime in the not-too-distant future. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. So item ten, nationwide opioid settlement funds acceptance.
Mayor, members of council, we're here just to quickly talk about the latest opioid settlement. This is a second one. We approved one last year. Last year. And while I'm talking about that, I'd like to introduce Haley Bloggs. She is our anti-drug coalition coordinator, and the first settlement is actually funding her position. So it's great that we have these funds available to support this position, which was once a part-time position and now a full-time position. It's really benefited our community for sure. So a little bit on the opioid settlement. It is a multi-year with over ninety million dollars coming to the state of Idaho on this settlement. As you can see, the disbursements are separated out between six years, all the way up to fifteen years. So calculating what it's going to look like for the city each year is a little bit challenging. But fortunately, with a great finance department, they were able to sort through the minutia and figure it out sort of for us. So we're looking at, as long as everybody is participating, we're looking at about one point two-two-six million dollars over the fifteen-year period. So it is a chunk of money, which I think will be very beneficial as we move forward with our strategies that we're looking to implement with this funding, if approved. I'd like to quickly turn this over to Kendall Nagy. You guys all know her, and she's going to give some high level.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So we had extensive conversations with a variety of partners while we reviewed the strategies. The strategies have remained the same from the first settlement funds to these ones that we're considering up next, and we were really looking to identify gaps, enhance the partnerships that we have, and then make the best selections for the strategies that we are looking at for the use of these additional settlement funds. And so one of the first suggestions that we have and conversations included with our crisis intervention team at the Meridian Police Department, and we're looking at the additional, the addition of a clinician and possible CIT officers as well. So as I go through these strategies, they're in order of the way that we've had the conversations, and we think that they would be best used to serve the community with our existing partnerships and perhaps filling some of those gaps. In other cases, it's enhancing services that are already there. And in addition to that, we had conversations about the community paramedic program in partnership with Meridian Fire Department and what that might look like as well.
So are you guys familiar with a community paramedic program, what that entails, or would you like a quick little synopsis? Okay, the community paramedic program would be actually something that is added on to enhance our CIT program by putting a PA onto the team so that we can better serve the community for those who are in crisis and alleviate space in our hospitals. So getting them medically evaluated so that we can ultimately get them to the resources and help they need. So that would be something that ultimately we'd have to partner with the fire department for.
And then next up, one of the reoccurring topics that came up in our conversations with partners is really how limited funding can be to those that need to receive treatment or mental health treatment, whether it's substance abuse treatment, mental health treatment, funding can be a prohibitor to moving forward to receive those services. And so one of the things that we talked about is coming up with contracting with community providers who already exist and provide those services, and the possibility of creating scholarship programs to identify those needs and gaps and help get those services and make those possible for our community members. In addition, under the prevention, preventing misuse of opioids, kind of have that laid out in the definitions up above or on the top, but partnering with education-based organizations to provide drug prevention and prevention opportunities. And a big part of those conversations was checking in with West Saida School District and seeing, you know, again, identifying gaps, enhancing services that may already be in existence and how we can help leverage those. And then one additional, I guess, possibility that we wanted to highlight and share with you is to further support the work of the Meridian Anti-Drug Coalition and the community efforts that we have as far as specific to opioid misuse. So that is kind of the gist of it, and then we stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Council, Pro.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Fantastic work on finding opportunities for us. I know there's no lack of opportunities to fight this difficult situation. So it looks like spread out over fifteen years. It's about eighty-one, eighty-two thousand a year. Are the the opportunities that you presented in priority, did you present them in priority of where you will start first? And then does that funding on an annual basis support one, possibly two additional staff in a long-term way?
Councilmember Pro. That, when it was broken down to, it looks like a larger number initially, but once you break it down over fifteen years, the eighty-one thousand or so. Looking at that, that would probably fund our three quarters of an FTE for a clinician position fully funded. So once we looked at that, we wanted to give you guys and show you guys that we're looking at a lot of different options and based off of the funding, and once you actually see it, that will really dictate which direction we go. And obviously, my bosses will help me decide that.
Yeah, and I would echo that. I mean, I've not had any conversation with the chief about any one of these individual positions as being a priority, one over the other. This was just more of a since the funds are being out there, we do have contracts to be signed to give you ideas about where we could be looking at deploying the use of these funds based upon the limitations of the settlements first and foremost. But just to go some ideas, but nothing is concrete. Councilor, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mayor, my only question was, is there an alternative path to settlement? Are there other cities that are joining litigation? Or is this just the most straightforward path, and we haven't been involved in any sort of legal discussions around that?
All I know is from the last settlement in this one, these have been two funding mechanisms to help us get to where we want to be. I do, actually, as of today, I've noticed there's a couple of other grant opportunities through the COPSS grants that are opening up funding for additional CIT-related positions. So there is some additional funding out there, but in regards to settlements, you know, we kind of find out about it in the twenty-third hour, and then we're scrambling to get it done.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, understood. That makes sense to me. So given that it's like a limited number of pharmacies, et cetera, maybe there are more coming our way, so you can sort of rank your priorities, and if more come, then you could fund more, right? I really appreciate the work here. It's a terrible problem in the community, and I guess my question is, you know, does this kind of core team think that the clinician is really the most critical, or have you guys kind of sort of to counsel and for his point, had a discussion on where to spend the funds? Or do you think they're most needed, or right now it's just a menu of options?
Councilor, Mr. Chair. We have had some discussions, and I have generally talked with the captain and the chief. And our CIT team is being heavily worked, and we know that's a problem between substance abuse and mental health. They coexist. And we know that's a problem between substance abuse and mental health. They coexist in a lot of these situations. And I will say that that is one of our top priorities, but it hasn't been finalized.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what happened.
Lieutenant Kendall, appreciate the presentation. Are we required to identify a use prior to receiving funds?
Councilman Cavener, no, we are not.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, maybe just a quick follow-up.
That's what happened.
So and recognize, Lieutenant Kendall, maybe putting you guys on the spot here. Is it your intention to bring back something as part of the budget process for this year? Or you're waiting till we receive funds and then come to it with a with a budget amendment? Help me forecast a little bit about what, what you intend to do next.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Cavener, so these are the preliminary conversations that we've had with partners to and then a deep dive analysis into the approved strategies that come with these settlement funds. And so the next step will be, now that we've kind of prioritized and had those conversations, is to look at what that really looks like, given the yearly allotment of the funding. And then, yes, we would present additional information to council and the mayor.
Yeah, Councilman Cavener, I can't say if it would be a budget part of the FY twenty-four or be offset, because this also has long-term implications that are they, these the priorities of the department when these funds go away. Those are things for the two gentlemen that are over here, you know, the value of this long-term versus the value of other needs within the department has to be identified. So are these contracts, are these employees? I think those are conversations to, yet to be had.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you anticipating my next questions and reading my mind. So that, that's very, very helpful context. Look forward to future conversations.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
It's an awesome opportunity to have funding like this. It's not completely structured on how it's used. And assuming this doesn't have a lot of reporting or any reporting at all, as long as you follow the guidelines of how it has to be spent.
Councilman Overton, the guidelines are, the reporting requirements are actually pretty minimal. We're going obviously based off the first settlement and it hasn't required a whole lot. We assume the, through the AG's office, they will provide us more instruction, but it looks like it's going to be similar to the first one, which will be very nice.
Mayor, follow-up. And I think this is where Councilman Cavener was discussing, but in year two, year three, this is fifteen years and you decide that you want to do something different along these lines. No issues, just come in front of council, come in front of the man-staff of the police department, decide how best you want to use these funds. You're not locked into any one use.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Overton, it's my understanding through multiple conversations with legal and the AG's office and reviewing many documents that as long as they are from the approved list of strategies that we are good. And then that would be a conversation that would be had, obviously with council and the mayor and other leaders to make that decision if we decided to change route. You know, mid-process.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Ogden.
Yeah, I wanted to, you know, this is a pool of funds that comes in. We've identified our needs certainly and we will put them to good use. And every community that is accepting these funds are doing something similar. Just wanted to step back and get your thoughts on, are we able as one entity working with other entities able to leverage any of these funds to, to support some of our larger needs? I mean, we can, we have, every community has their problems with, with substance abuse. But yet there are larger needs that we aren't going to build a support facility in Meridian just to serve Meridian residents. There are those places like Allen Ball House and others that we've collaborated with. Can you just briefly tell me, is there a good working relationship among everybody to try and address these collectively to? And I don't know if it's leveraging these funds, but maybe just as a whole, are we making progress as a valley on working together to help people in need?
And I can go ahead and address some of that. So Mr. Mayor and Councilman Hoagland, part of those initial conversations was exactly that and recognizing that there are a lot of municipalities participating in receiving these fundings and how do we best use them for our community members? And so, yes, those conversations were had and will continue to be had, not only here within the city of Meridian, but the state and across the nation. We were just at a national training for prevention and those conversations are being had and there's being research and additional conversations into how that best works for communities. But obviously, within each community, we have unique needs. And so if there's something specific, then maybe I could address that. But at this point, definitely those things have been considered. And that was why we wanted to reach out to our partners and again, identify those existing providers in our communities. And I spoke with legal on, you know, we're not going to reinvent the wheel, but can we help support what already exists and is, and leverage that? And we, yes, we can.
Council, additional questions? Are, were you looking for action on the agreement? Because someone provided me documents to sign right here in front of me.
Yes, Mayor. So to move forward in the settlement, we will obviously need each one of those, I think there's five. Mayor, I think, five forms that I will need you to sign to show that the city is wanting to move forward and participate in this opioid settlement.
Scenary? Do you have direction on what type of motion is necessary?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think it requires a council action. I think you can't. We've already agreed to it ultimately. Sort of the council wants to at least acknowledge on the record that we've previously approved this, but we don't need a vote on the council for this particular part. We've already accepted the original agreement, so.
So this is just copying and under the second agreement?
Yes.
Interesting. All right. Thank you for your time. Council, would you like to take any, make any informal statement on this topic?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
It seems prudent just to make a motion on it, to be honest. I move that we sign the sub-items under item number ten, the various participation forums that we discussed.
Have a motion, a second, is there a discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, no opposed. We will go do that. Thank you very much. Gives me all the, makes me feel a little bit better. So. Okay. With that, we will move on to item eleven, which is our Parks and Recreation Department, Lakeview Golf Club, Clubhouse and course improvements. Welcome, Mr. Barton, not Borton, Mr. Barton, to the podium.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here to have a discussion on some longer-range capital improvements at the golf course. Do you remember when we took over, we commissioned the National Golf Foundation to, to look at the operation and perform a, give us a strategic plan. And along with that strategic plan came with a capital improvement plan that identified not only startup costs, but different tiers, tier one, two, and three, and then also some longer-range improvements. So we've done our, we've done startup costs, which were golf carts and some maintenance equipment. Tier one had the remainder of the maintenance equipment and some other items, tier two and tier three. The bulk of those, the biggest priority, of course, is the irrigation system that you're familiar with, and then also the cart paths. A lot of the items, the other items, after living with the course for a while, are items that we can neither do in-house or we don't feel are really needed at this time. So based on some feedback that we got from golfers and the surrounding neighborhood, you know, some of the reoccurring themes are, of course, the irrigation and the cart paths. You know, lower fees, especially for residents. Well, we just did a resident, non-residence fee, which and reduced the trail fee, which I think addresses that. The restaurant management, we're contracting that out. So that's been highly successful. And then, and then in the restaurant, just the ambiance, you know, welcoming for non-regulars. And some of these improvements, this kind of ties into this conversation. And then the need for permanent restrooms on the course was kind of a reoccurring theme as well. So what I'd like to do is we've, we've done some schematic drawings and hopefully you've had a time to, time to look at them. We started with some interior improvements in the clubhouse, some of those ambiance things. I mean, the clubhouse has been there since nineteen ninety-five and, and really hasn't had any work done at all to the inside or the outside other than the items that were deferred maintenance that we went and repaired, you know, plumbing, electrical, that kind of stuff. So we, we put together a plan of some improvements and what it could look like. And what I'm going to do is just kind of click through these slides real quick. And if there's a question, please stop me. Because we'll, we'll get through this here pretty quick. So we had an interior decorator do this stuff with kind of a golf theme in mind, flooring and, you know, doing some paint on the cabinets, furnishings, that kind of stuff. So really modest, modest improvements, really. I mean, not a lot of heavy remodeling where we're removing walls and and doing that kind of stuff. So again, furniture, so everything we want, and even if we do phase this, we wanted to have a plan. So if we go, let's say we go put flooring in that and then come back a year later or two years later and we pick out furniture. We want it, we want it to be insisted and compatible with one another. So it doesn't look like a bunch of stuff that was just, you know, different ideas over the course of time. So one consistent idea. And then with that, we went out and got actual prices for this stuff. We had contractor group come out and give us pricing. We did add some contingencies to that for unforeseen conditions and also you know, cost escalation, depending on what we do. We don't, definitely don't want to underestimate, but again, these are, these numbers are are good as of a couple of months ago. It took a little time to assemble the whole thing. So it gives you a pretty, really good, accurate idea of what these improvements may cost. So then moving to the outside, one of the things that we hear all the time quite often is the lack of shade on the back patio. Kind of that ambiance thing. So I came up with a system of vinyl shade coverings in three different spots. These can be, these have louvers that can be opened and closed. So if you want a little sun there, you can get sun. You don't have to engineer it for snow load. The louvers can just be opened up in the winter time and it can leave there, live there without a lot of effort. And then again, the, the furniture out there, a lot of times the patio is really crowded. I mean, it's not, you know, it's, it's there's high volume times of year out there and low volume during the high volume time of year, it's super crowded out there. And so furniture underneath the shade coverings and then some fire tables, again, that, kind of that ambiance theme. And then with the pricing, patio shade system and then all the other items. The furniture was, was probably one item that jumped out at me, but I think that if you're going to invest in some furniture for outside, that it should be somewhat durable. There was nowhere to pull it in and store it like you would at your house. So the stuff you see at Lowe's and Home Depot would just deteriorate in a short period of time. And we don't want to have to revisit this in five to ten years. Hopefully it's a fifteen to twenty-year solution. Again, the, you know, contingencies for both the exterior improvements and the furniture. One of the things that's maybe not an upgrade, but it needed heavy maintenance item is their building needs some stucco repairs and then probably a different color put on it. The color is, is pretty outdated right now and, and bring it up to up to stuff. So then the other thing that we've been, that we've been hearing from people and we've had issues with a lack of restroom, restroom's on the course is right now we have, we have one onsite restroom that's built in. The other restrooms are, are porta-potties and they're out there all year long. There's one that's out in the open. There's a couple that are behind fences. And that's, the picture on the left just kind of depicts what that looks like from the street. So it, it works. It's definitely not, I mean, if it, it functions and that's about it. It's not, doesn't fit with the neighborhood. It's not hard to keep clean. It's just, it's porta-potty. What we did is come up with a plan for, to replace those porta-potties with three built-in restrooms and then add another location that currently doesn't have one. And this is a location that we feel is necessary just due to the flow of play in the course and some of the feedback that we've gotten from the neighbors. So again, another picture of that restroom across from the clubhouse. Here's the one that's on Black Cat. Kind of disguised, but still, still porta-potty. And then here's a picture of the existing on-course restroom. This one in the, in the capital improvement plan was designated to the upgrade, upgraded for ADA compliance. And there's this one, if we, if we do go forward with the other ADA compliant on-course restrooms, there isn't a need to upgrade this one. There's almost no way to do it. It's, it's removing, there's, there's no way to make this restroom ADA compliant without removing the front wall and just turning it into a single-user, single-occupancy restroom. So the, the amount of effort that you'd have to put into this little building is almost not worth it. It's, it's old. I mean, it functions, it works great. If we have other ADA facilities on-site, we're, more than seventy-five percent of our facilities would be ADA compliant. So so we feel we're good there. And then this is an example of some of those restrooms, what they could look like. They, you know, when you talk prefab restrooms, you automatically think campground, trailhead, those brown CTX buildings that are at all the trailheads, but they're actually really nice. They're very affordable. You need to go out in the street and grab water and sewer, bring power to them, build a pad and put concrete around them and they can, you know, they have a ton of architectural selections. You know, you can have drinking fountains on the front. So they're definitely not those brown trailhead restrooms that you see. And then that's just another picture. That's a pretty good floor plan of what it is. So they're single occupancy restrooms and they have a janitor's chase on the side for utilities. So then again, some pricing for the restrooms. Locations, you can kind of see the breakdown of where all the cost would be for these. Other two. Right here. And so one thing we wanted to talk about, oh, there is, there is another heavy maintenance item out there that I think we might have. There's been some talk about the range hood and the kitchen being super hot and not functioning properly. And as of a couple of days ago, I think we've got it solved with, there was a couple of relays not working and some motors. We had to dig into the thing and just do some really heavy maintenance. So the need for upgrade, I know that that was brought up at a past meeting. I think Councilman Borton brought that up to to us, a question, you know, are you aware of this kind of thing? So I wanted to at least mention it. And but we think, we didn't put it on the list because I think we have it solved. So process and, and timing. We haven't closed the irrigation project out yet, but we're, we're right at the end. It looks like we're going to have remaining contingency that is unspent. So it would be, it would be our preference to use that remaining, some of that remaining contingency to at least fund the patio cover, the shade cover before this summer. And it's something that we talked to a couple of contractors that do this stuff. The lead time on it is about a month. We can bid it, give them the go-ahead. I, I'm, I'm pretty confident that not only will we have the, the money now in our current budget, we don't have the spending. the money now in our current budget, we don't have the spending authority, but that's what we'd be asking for this evening. But we we will have the the budget and we think that we can get it done prior to like June first before the, before the hot weather sets in. And then and then just the remaining request would be submitted through the budget process. And then just as far as, as far as timing, you know, bid and construct the exterior clubhouse improvements in the fall and then bid and construct the interior clubhouse during the winter. Because if you're going to do flooring in there, you got to, you got to uproot the entire business and basically move it out and floor it and paint it. And so there's a period of time of a couple of weeks where you'd basically be closed or it'd be sequenced such that you'd have the golf shop in the restaurant and restaurant would be closed. The details to work out. And then the on course restrooms are something that could, could come in a variety of you know, timing could be two and FY twenty-four, two and twenty-five, one a year. All next year, all in twenty-five. I mean, I think that there's some conversations with, that we've had with the mayor and this and how how this may fit into the CFP and and that the balancing of that. So that's where these suggestions have have come from those conversations. So I think with that, I'll stand for questions and.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
So I think what I'm struggling with personally, it looks like if you add all these things up, it's like definitely two million dollars worth of expenses. I'd like to see the sources of revenue. So I would love for us to start treating the golf course as a business that should support itself. Maybe I'm, it may be premature. I understand that we just took it over not long ago. We've raised our course fees, but I want us to start kind of getting away from treating it as a park and treating it more like something that should pay for itself. And so I think what I'd be interested to see would be sources of funding that could come from these investments. So maybe it's if we have revenue sharing under our food contract. You know, this occurs to me like the tenant improvements that would happen under a lease, right? So if we had, we have a new hurt, you know, we have a obviously a contract in place. I don't recall when it expires, but you know, with any kind of real estate, normally if a tenant took over a space, we would fit it out with tenant improvements. And then we would get some kind of either lease payment or revenue sharing back. So I want to look at if we make these enhancements to the venue itself where they're serving food, you know, are there potential revenue opportunities from weddings, events? Something under the contract. The restrooms do seem like something that's needed. They seem extremely expensive. So I think it'd be tough to bite that off all at once. I guess, so just from my perspective, I'd like to see a we've had a very conservative model so far on what we've been thinking the golf course would do. I'd like to see a more ambitious revenue projection model of what we think the golf course could do and the revenue that it could generate that would help justify the investment in these upgrades.
Excellent feedback. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader. So the the restaurant, our restaurant concessionaire or contractor tenant pays us two percent of the gross. So as their gross goes up, we are theoretically, our, our payment goes up as well. So we get a little revenue with that. It's not, it's not a lot. And the, there hasn't been over the course of time, at least in my opinion, that investment in the facility or the property that that should over time. So it almost feels like we're playing a little bit of catch up.
That's one pro.
Yeah, four or five questions. Okay, for me to just go for it. Okay. So similar, similar things stuck out to me as what Councilwoman Schrader mentioned. I don't want to get too much in the nitty gritty, but just curious that the interior designer and contractor group that was used primarily focuses on residential, the, the as you mentioned, the quality of the products are really important because of the heavy use. But these really strike me as very residential feeling. And so I don't know if this is really a a commercial type of approach to this, like carpet tile, every time I've ever seen it used, it tears up real fast. There's just a variety of it concerns I have about the products that are displayed on here about, I'm curious if any of the servers were actually you know, involved in the choice of of items, because it seems to me there's issues with, you know, anytime you have a table that has a bunch of crevices in it, it's a nightmare to clean. There's just a variety of things that I saw that I thought would actually be be time, time consuming with the products that were chosen. So we don't have to get into that too much in this. I can certainly set up a meeting with you and ask those questions. But were the, were the bids based on those exact products that you received or were they like and kind?
Yes, they were. So a couple of things, the the material choices were insight architects who has they're an architect that designs, I mean, they designed our maintenance shop and they've done other things. It's their interior design group that made these choices and and these choices were a result of a meeting that we had with the golf course personnel and then also Rhonda with Roosters Eatery and Catering. So she was at the table for these now that I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure that she picked up on what you did as far as can you, can you clean the, you know, like cracks get in there? I mean, I don't, I don't know, but I think that, I think those are the exterior tables, correct? And if I, if I had to guess, I'd say they're open. So rainwater can go through, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. But those are, those are great points, something to.
That's one pro.
Thank you. The same question with the pergolas. They, they look like residential patio covers. Are they, are they warranted? Are are they designed for commercial use? And just wondering why there wasn't a design to cover the entire patio, why there's gaps? Was that purposeful? You know, just kind of wanting to, to understand a little bit more about. I'm not trying to pick apart what was done. I just, I see all of these and I just see a lot of, maybe it's being in the industry. I see a lot of challenges with use and where with the level they're going to be. So I don't, I just want to understand that.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Perle. That's those, those are good points and honestly, I think that the the next, so if it was, if it wasn't vinyl for the shade coverings, it, we wouldn't probably put wood in because of the maintenance. And then you would go to steel. So then you would have something that would be so heavy that you structurally, you couldn't place it on the roof. So you would have posts near the building and then post out towards the edge of the patio. And then the cost of that, it would be solid. But then you don't have the luxury. And I see what you mean. The vinyl is, you know, you see vinyl products and they, they, they're not fifty year products for sure. I mean, they're going to be, it's fifteen, twenty years. You, you get what you pay for. And so that that was some of the thought process behind that. Why there's three sections? Just design aesthetics to break it up, have some open areas. I mean, it wasn't anything. It, it was the plan they came up with and I, I think recalling it was like I saw it and I said, oh, that looks pretty cool. I mean, it's, all right, I don't have anything better in my mind. So yeah.
Um, so as Councilwoman Schrader mentioned, seems the cost of the restrooms are the price of a small house. So is that is that because you're, you're running water and sewer long distances? Is that a good part of the cost? Because the structure itself doesn't seem like it would be with concrete pad doesn't seem like it would run that high.
Yeah. So water sewer needs to come from, so we have to cut into the street and we need to go down and grab the water and sewer. There's a couple that are very deep. And then we need to bring power over there. There's that Idaho power line on there. It is, it is a budget that I can stand here and confidently say we can execute the project for that price. I don't want it, I don't want to lead anyone to believe that it would be any less and then, and then stand up here and and say, you know, I, I know I told you this, but we need more money. So there's contingency in there. It does seem very expensive. You also have concrete that needs to come from the cart paths and around. And so there's, you know, the, all the parts and pieces of that. They're just expensive. I mean, the, the, the good thing is, I guess, is there is, there are utilities close by, but we got to go out in the street and get them. So it's not, it's not cheap.
Can you quickly go over again, the restroom placement? It seems to me like there's not a restroom kind of on the whole north side. Did you happen to, was there a need to run that those, that placement by Green Play? Or how did you get, was that just recommendations from survey of golfers? Or how did you come to those locations?
So the three, three of the four locations are where we have currently have porta potties. It seems to be a kind of a, like a, in the middle or a compromise of where people would, would need that convenience. The other one is on, at the beginning of number eleven tee. And theoretically, people should stop at the clubhouse and use the restroom between eight and eleven and eight and thirteen. But they don't because they think that they're going to get, they're going to get leapfrogged if if the course is busy, which it, it is quite often. So in number eleven, we've had complaints of people not using any restroom. So that was, that was that, I mean, that's the, the reasoning behind those locations. Like replacing the porta potties, those have been tried and true. They've been used and they've been in those like locations for years. They seem to work. And then we're adding one at eleven. An additional one where we tried to get a porta potty over there, but the neighbors didn't want it. But some did, but most didn't.
Couple comments just for council's consideration and, you know, I don't disagree with Councilwoman Schrader. You know, in the, the context of, we do want this to function like a business and that's part of the reason why at least I couldn't say, let's do all four restrooms in a year. As we see the, the the income stream with improvements will hopefully give us an idea. There's also the, we still are in the agreement phase with Ward where we are seeing some income coming in from Ward. I didn't want them to line out every dollar that Ward is coming in because ultimately that has to be operational. And we are moving towards coming off. That is also swimming pool money, you know, there, there are some costs, there's some income coming in for additional things, but I just wanted them to present the information so that you could see what was out there. You know, the, the shade structure came up during our budget conversation this last year with council. It was, it seemed to be identified as a priority. That was the one thing that we wanted. If we had the funds to try to move that forward as quickly as possible. The rest of you will see through the budget process. I can't say, you know, exactly, I, I look at these numbers and I think some of them are high. You know, in that regards, I completely agree, even from the furniture costs. But I think they'll, they'll just be introduced as prioritized and go from there. Now, if we want to get to the point where this is one hundred percent paid by users of the course, I think that's a, that is a different level of conversation. Are we to that point in time? Should it be that? Or should that be the expectation? Once we get it up to a certain level? That, you know, the course revenue can be re-generated back into the course for those type of improvements. And that is that cost of service level conversation. I just don't know that we are, that we have a product yet to be able to put on the market to be able to justify that from my perspective, maybe some of it, but maybe not all of it. But if we make the interior better, then perhaps it is talking to Roosters, say instead of two percent, it should be higher, it should be a higher because of those tenant improvements, as was mentioned in that regards moving forward. And I think those are great conversation points to have. Maybe it's two percent, but if your revenues go up thirty percent, then there should be an escalator that says, you know, a flat fee or are that percentage increases as their revenues go up as well. So I think there's a lot of good points and conversations. But just want to point that out. Councilman Kavner.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mike, a question for you on the bathrooms, because that is an expanded use, is that eligible for impact fees to cover the cost?
That's a great question. We'd, we'd have to get back to you.
Okay, I, I, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilman Kavner.
I, I think that's, that's helpful. I, I think to Councilman Restraiter's earlier question, what is the department's plan to, to pay for these recommended expenses close to two million dollars? If the answer is that it's all falling on the general fund, then I'm, I'm going to probably be pretty reluctant to be supportive of these requests. I think that the city has made a fairly sizable investment in the course and continue to do so on things that are important to the course operations, like the irrigation system. I look at the bathrooms as a little bit of a public health, and so I may be open to a further conversation about restrooms. But everything else is largely fit and finished. And I think that it's an opportunity for the course to perform. To tie into the mayor's point, to Councilman Restraiter's points, let's see the success before we start investing more millions of dollars into furniture and sound systems and and things of that nature. And then just for, for what it's worth, I think I would prefer that we complete the irrigation process progress, or excuse me, irrigation project. And not necessarily utilize any savings to do items in addition to the what we budgeted for. If, if we want to bring the shade structure back as part of a budget item this year, I'm supportive of at least considering that. But I, I would prefer that we get out of the habit of trying to utilize cost savings to do projects in addition to the what was approved through the budget process.
And just for clarification, I, I do think that some of these are necessary personally. I'm not, I'm just saying that not all of them need to be done right away. And some of it, we can look at some of, some of these moving forward. But Councilpro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree. I, I think that improvements will bring, will bring profit in quicker. There, there are folks that, that don't use this course because it's aged. So I think that you'll see a return on that more quickly. So my one last question I didn't, I didn't get to ask is, you know, I'm hesitant to, to look at contributing, you know, a half a million dollars or so to interior, exterior upgrades. If there's a potential that, that the clubhouse would be expanded at some point. So where are we at as far as capacity? Seems to me like when I've been at events there, when I've gone to, when I've been there, you know, at, at a variety of different things, it's pretty full. So how is that working? And is there an anticipation of an expansion on the clubhouse? And should we consider doing that structurally rather than doing interior upgrades first?
Yeah, that's a great question, great thought. I mean, there's been some conversations of a expansion. So you could put, there was, there's a trend in golf right now of installing simulators or winter revenue. And that's a thing, but we've never specifically even, we haven't talked about expanding the clubhouse building itself. It's I think that some of that just from, from being out there, that I think that the that if the patio was a little more friendly, that you expanding the patio is going to be way more cost effective than expanding the building. Because during the, during the colder months, you, you want to be indoors and then there's the indoor has a, indoor space has a capacity issue. But there aren't as many golfers when it's cold out, obviously. So I think during those really warm, nice summer days and expanded patio, so we're not, we're not anything that we're doing here wouldn't jeopardize a future expansion to the patio. anything that we're doing here wouldn't jeopardize a future expansion to the patio.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Huglan. Yeah, I think we, we, there's a lot of good things here. You know, if we want to increase revenue, like a patio shade system, that's going to bring in more people. You don't want to sit out when it's hot and not have shade. So those are types of things that make sense to increase revenue, to have more people there in the summertime and, and do that. And that would come back as a budget amendment at the appropriate time, I'm assuming, Mike, to, to take a look at that.
Yeah, Councilman Huglan. So the, so the, the, the question was, if we have contingency savings from the irrigation project, would you want us to pull the trigger this spring and do the, do the shade covering? And then just, and not, not do a budget amendment, but, but then the rest of it could come back during budget processes. Whatever those are, next year or in following years, whatever that looks like.
Mike, on that patio shade system, 67,900, so 68,000, then there, I noticed there's electrical ceiling fans at eight free. Is that considered part of that patio shade system and electrical ceiling fans together? Okay. So about 75, 78 total. And so if you have the fun savings there to be able to pull the trigger on that, you'd want us to act, let you know that yes, we should move forward on, on something like that, which, I mean, for something like that, if, if we want to see increased revenue, more use of the restaurant, makes sense to do that, to take those savings and move forward and, and make that happen and make it a, a better location for people to eat and enjoy the, the way their long Idaho evenings that we have, albeit it can be hot at times. So that shade will help keep that cooler during the day as well. So not only for people sitting out there, but even in the evening. So you don't have radiating heat off the, off the concrete. So I, I mean, I, I'd be certain, certainly in favor of doing something like that, but I, I don't know if council wants to pull the trigger on that. But we talk about revenue, we want to see revenue, we have to make an investment and expanded. And if we aren't making investments in this, I certainly don't see an expanded clubhouse. So or, or anything else, but something like that makes sense. And then when the budget session comes and we can talk about various things that we can do step by step to, to make these other things happen. So, but that's, that's where I'm coming from. And I think we should probably make that decision if we can tonight on the patio system.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilon Shatter.
I, I have a couple of issues with the approach, I think similar to Councilman Cavanagh. So I am concerned that if we create an incentive for departments to have larger contingencies, they have a, not saying that this is the case, but I don't want to create an incentive in the city that departments perceive that there is an advantage to having larger contingencies to then be reused for something else, if that's an easier path. I don't think that's the way to do it. You have a 15% contingency, for example, on your exterior and furniture. I know part of it is, it's always better to under promise and over deliver. I get that, but I don't want to get in the habit of using contingencies for things when maybe it should be a budget amendment. Go through that process. I'm not, I, I, I'm much more allergic to redoing the interior right now than putting in the patio shade system. Because it looks like it will increase the number of tables available by quite a bit. But I'd like, I'd like to hear some feedback about the revenue that could be generated from the patio. Understanding that it's a guess. And that's what we do when we make projections, we're making an educated guess. I personally would like an educated guess about what we think that could do for us. It could come from our vendor or from wherever. But I just, you know, I think there's a right way to go about doing it. And I also would like to know for the contingency, where are we at? Are we completely certain we won't need that contingency? For what it's meant for? That's the other issue.
So answer that, answer that question first. We're, it's, we, we haven't closed the project out yet. But we're, we've tallied the final cost. And there will be contingency, there will be enough contingency there to fund the, the shade. And, you know, that, that increased users or revenue, I, I know that one of the things that people like to do is they like to have a shotgun start at a golf course instead of tee times when they have a tournament. And I know the Women's Association do. And a lot of times they'll have a shotgun start at 10 o'clock and they'll come back and, and you know, you want them to stay for lunch. And you want them to hang out and socialize. They can't. It's too, it's so hot out in the back that they go home. So I know that I've seen that. I don't know how we could actually, you know, volume over time, I think is, is little, little steps, parts and pieces add the, all, all the things that we can do to create a successful business are going to all add up to that sum. But I know from experience that one of the, you know, the, the, the conversations about shotgun starts and tee times and you know, you want to give people a shotgun start where they all go out together, they all finish together, and then they stay and eat lunch and they hang out for a while. But they don't tend to do that because it's not desirable. It's not, the patio is not friendly in the afternoon at about two o'clock when they're finishing.
Mr. Mayor. If I can make a suggestion, I would just start with, what do we think our 2% cut is of gross revenues? From, you know, take the time period that we've owned the course. And you're understanding this is, it's, it's going to be really iffy, right? But here's how, here, here's our 2%. If we take, you know, six months of the year and adjust for seasonality, if we take that and create a 12 month projection, here's what we think we're getting from the food service now. We're increasing the capacity of the restaurant by whatever, 15%. That only applies to a certain percentage of the year because it's terrible to be outside part of the year. Just take a swag at it for me. I, that, that's what I'm asking. I'm not asking for, I'm not going to hold you to it. I'm not, I'm not going to be mad if you don't meet that projection, but I just, I think we need to get in the habit with this golf course of thinking about it more like a business and saying, okay, we can increase, like Liz, we're going to increase the capacity of the restaurant by X percentage by adding this straight shade structure. These are now usable tables, like just, I need a little more meat on the bone.
Yeah, then that's a good thought. So the food and beverage operation, when we had it grossed about 550,000. So we get 2% of gross. So we're, we're going to, we'll get an $11,000 payment at the end of the year. So is it, is the enhanced patio, that comfort for the patio, it translates into other areas because people want to come back and they want to play around the golf, which that helps, that helps the portion of the business that we're directly, we're, we're, we're realizing all the profits from that. As well as they're going to rent a cart, they're going to buy a shirt, but get a bucket of balls and warm it ups, warm up ahead of time. So it's all about, you know, the whole, all the parts and pieces. The other thing is that during the pandemic, golf has been, golf had a really a surge in popularity. So I think that we should position ourselves to have a course where people want to go to as a destination when golf maybe isn't so popular. We don't, we don't feel a downturn in that. That popularity of golf that still, it's still there. But
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Mike. I, I, what I'd suggest is, you guys have further conversations on what, you know, Councilon Restraiter, you're looking for. Those are good questions, but when you do rough calculations, however you want to do it, let me know and we can get you back on a work session and talk about this further and go through some numbers and whatnot. We're just, we've got an executive session coming up and we're pressing up against the timeframe. And just want to move forward with, with what we could get done here in this work session. So.
And if I could just add one last thing, yeah, but we are here because of the time of year before the golf season. Yes, there was contingency. We were not going to recommend the departments come back to you because of necessary leftover dollars. Budget amendment, however we want to call it or process it, but this was discussed at the budget hearing last year. This specific item was identified by the council even as something to look into. That's why we are really here for that one item at this point in time. The rest of it was just so you're aware of the bigger picture. And when you may start seeing things, understanding the long term, council may have different viewpoints on what is a priority, when, how, where and why. I think this is good feedback and good for future conversations, but we'll be back.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Huglan. I would move that we go into executive session for Idaho code 74-206A and D.
Second.
Have a motion second to go into executive sessions or discussion? If not, car call roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Burrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Huglan.
Aye.
All eyes must carry us and we'll move into executive session. All eyes motion carries and we'll move into executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we come out of executive session.
A motion to come out of executive session? Is there a discussion? If not, in favor, see if I have by saying I.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed nay, the eyes have it and we are adjourned.
Move we adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn on favor, see if I by saying I.
Hi.
Opposed nay, the eyes have it and we are adjourned. Counsel will call the meeting or for the record is March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at six nineteen P. M. We'll begin this evening's regular city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Yeah.
My apologies, Councilwoman Perro. Councilman Cavanagh. Councilman Borton. Not here yet. Uh, Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next time up is pledge of allegiance, so if you all please rise and join us in the pledge. Looks like we don't have anyone here for the community invocation, so we will go ahead and move on to adoption of the agenda. Mr. Mayor. How's one whole one?
We didn't finish our items under the in the executive session, so at the end of the meeting, I will add executive session Idaho code seventy-four dash two oh six D to our agenda. So with that change, Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of the agenda as amended.
Have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda's amendment, is there a discussion? If not, I'm favor seeing the by by saying I.
Hi.
Opposed nay, the eyes have it and the agenda is adopted as amended. Correct, everyone want to sign up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, then with that, uh, we will go on to action items. First time up is a public hearing for Alexander's Landing subdivision H twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight four. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments from Stacy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Um, the applicant is submitted an application for annexation and zoning and preliminary plat for the Alexander's Landing subdivision. And this site consists of five point two acres of land and is currently zoned R U T. And it's located near the southeast corner of West Pine Avenue and Black Cat Road. Um, history on the property is none. Um, the comprehensive plan flume designation is medium density residential. The subject property is five point two three acres, currently containing an existing home. The subject site is a budding and an R eight development to the north and Horse Meadow subdivision to the east and west is currently residential, not yet annexed into the city of Meridian. And to the south is the railroad and Purdum Gulch drain. The subject property is designated as a medium density residential on the future land use map consistent with the approved development to the north. The applicant proposes a twenty-four lot subdivision and four common lots for single family residential detached home at a gross density of four point five nine units an acre, which is within the desired density reigns range of the medium density designation. Um, an existing home is on the property is proposed to remain on one block two. The outbuilding located on lot three block two shall be removed with the development of this property. The existing home does not meet the required number of off-street parking spaces per the U D C for a three-bedroom home that requires four parking spaces, at least two in an enclosed garage and other spaces may be enclosed for a minimum of a ten-foot by twenty-foot parking pad. The existing home does not comprise of an enclosed garage. Staff recommends that the non-conformity of the home be remedied to meet the off-street parking resolate regulations um, prior to the city engineer's signature on the final plat. Um, access is prefo- proposed from Quarter Horse Lane from the north. Direct access to North Black Cat Road and West Pine Avenue is prohibited. The subject property is dependent upon the development of the horse mo- Horse Meadows subdivision directly to the north to reconstruct the portion of Quarter Horse Lane, which is currently a private road now as a public street street, which would provide public street frontage and access to the site. Um, due to access availability, development should not commence until a public road access is available to the site upon development of the Horse Meadows subdivision prior to submitting a final plat for approval. Um, a local stub stretch, which is West Newland Drive, is proposed for interconnectivity between the two developments that is stubbed at the east-west boundary on the site in accordance with the U D C. The street does extend a hundred and fifty feet, therefore a temporary turnaround is required. Um, the applicant is proposing to construct a temporary turnaround on a common lot ten block one, which decreases the usability of the area. Staff recommends that the applicant construct the temporary turnaround on lots five, seven, block three in the southwest corner of the development to increase the open space for the development. And the reason for this recommendation is to ensure that the open space for the development remains intact without placing a burden on the H O A to remediate the removal of the turnaround. Um, the applicant included a concept plan for the property to the west. Sorry. Um, which has shown that demonstrates how the R one property could potentially develop in the future. Landscape buffers, there are no street buffers are required per the U D C table for internal local streets. Common open space landscaping is proposed um, as shown on the landscape plan, um, common open space and amenities. A minimum of fifteen percent or one point two three acres based on a five point two three acres of qualified qualified open spaces required to be provided in this development per the standards listed in the U D C. An open space exhibit was um, submitted that depicts one point two nine acres of common open space for the development with a zero point seven eight acres of this area as quad opens qualified open space. The minimum, the minimum amount of qualified open space required is zero point seven eight acres, approximately thirty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-four square feet. Um, a ten-foot wide pathway is required per the master's pathways plan in lieu of the proposed six-foot pathway running along the southern border of the site. Um, the project size of five point two three acres requires a minimum of one amenity point for every five acres according to the submitted plans, the applicant is proposing the following amenities worth three amenity points. Picnic tables with a shelter pathways. The proposed amenities and their point value is correct and exceed the U D C requirements for a project of this size. Um, sidewalks are five feet, a wide attached sidewalks are proposed within the development according to the U D C standards. Um, the Purdum Gulch drain does run along the southern border of the site. Staff did not receive a response from Nampa Meridian Irrigation District. And whether or not an easement exists on the property for the lateral, if it does, it should be depicted on the plat and no encroachments allowed within the easement. And per the U D C, the applicant is requesting a council waiver to allow the the drain to remain open in a natural state. Um, building elevations were provided, three conceptual revised building elevations with floor plans were submitted that demonstrate with future homes in these developments. Look like variations of two-story homes with a two-story garage, two-car garage are proposed. The submitted elevations do depict a number of architectural and design standards and field field materials of lap siding, stone, differing colors, roof lines and sand and varying and varying of home styles. And the last thing that staff does, um, staff request that council strike a condition. A three C pertaining to the landscape plan submitted. Um, we would like it struck that it depict an open vision fence at least six foot feet in height around the Purdum drain per the U D C, um, this is not required. Um, commission recommended approval of this application. And the summary of the commission public hearing in favor were Kent Brown. In opposition were none commenting where Kent Brown written testimony was none, key issues were none. Um, key issues of discussion by commission were timing of the propose proposed development, not commencing until a public road access is available to the site upon development of Horse Meadows subdivision to the north. Um, recommend a request that a historical advisory committee works with the city and preserving the Roosevelt Elementary School that was used in nineteen ten located on the property to the west. And I did look that up um, on G I S and then actually there is, there are people that are living there and it's considered a residential home. It doesn't say anything about a school, so I'm not sure if that is the correct site or not that they were referring to. Commission changes to staff recommendation, um, the developer shall set aside funds for for re remediation of a temporary turnaround on lot ten, and I did um, add a condition that the developer would um, submit a surety for that and we would hold it until such time that they that that road develops and then they would, we would refund them and they would landscape that piece. And outstanding issues for city council are none. There was written testimony since the commission hearing from three different people, Courtney, Munell, Jane R Byam and Kathy Gallantine, and mostly the concerns were about traffic concerns down Black Cat Road. And the other concerns were they would like to see a better transition with like to see R two zone lots or something with less density proposed with this development next to the existing R two and R U T lots that are within the county. And with that said, that concludes the presentation and I stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Stacy. Counsel questions?
Mr. Mayor.
As one pro.
Stacy, thank you for being so thorough. If I remember correctly, with the Horse Meadows subdivision, um, there was some issue with getting existing um, property owners in that area to sign off and be in full agreement on access on Quarter Horse Lane and whether it would be a public road or not. Do we know what the status is of that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perro, um, I do not know what the status of that is. I know A C H D submitted their report and require this to be um, a public road, and I know the applicant has more details because he, they are working with that development to the north together on when the timing is going to come. They have not submitted a final plat. But A C H D's comments were that they were in order for this development to have public roads, that they would approve that that road does need to come in and I at this time, there is no update on that part of it.
It's to me.
As one pro.
Limitation uh, to not access Black Cat or Pine from this development, is that a limitation that's that was put on by A C H D specifically? Or is it just a limitation of the designer of this parcel or uh, an issue with accessing through the north?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perro, so that is actually a requirement um, from us and A C H D. So Pine is going to punch through, I believe, this spring or summer. Um, that's going to finish, and so the development to the north is going to take access from Pine and then that will also allow everything else to develop to the south. And so that will be the access everyone will use from Quarter Horse Lane.
Counsel, any additional questions for staff? Did I see the applicant coming forward?
For the record, Kent Brown, thirty-one sixty-one East Springwood, Meridian, Idaho. Stacy, could you put up my little slide? I'm really I I T or electronic challenge, so I'm going to try to describe. I've tried to use the mouse and show an arrow and I'm terrible. I'm just make you aware. When the map does come up, working with the developers that are doing Pine Street that is to the east at ten mile. They're in the process of building the bridge currently of Pine. So if we take that top drawing and so they're scheduled to have the bridge done before water goes into the ditch. It's a precast structure. Uh? Okay. Perfect. So currently there's over five thousand vehicle trips of people that go down Pine Street from Black Cat and they drive up to the end there where the bridge is now being installed. And then they have to turn around, go back. So that has increased the traffic in the Black Cat area. And A C H D, I I believe the city of Meridian is, and everybody's real anxious for this bridge to go in and and that's supposed to be completed. Stacy, we're in March already, so the next month before the water goes in, they're supposed to have the the structure there and then they've got paving on both sides already. So that that will function and will relieve a lot of that traffic that's of concern in that area. I've kind of highlighted, there's a solid green line that is over in that area. Uh, High Mile Pines is recorded plat and then Foxcroft. They're all building a pathway that uh, goes up to the park, as you can see my solid line. I think one of the biggest challenges that I face as a planner is taking a piece of property like this and then making it work. And we're asked to do certain things like we're putting in a a pathway basically that goes nowhere. It dead ends to the west and it dead ends to the east. You can see where we're building it in uh, ten mile or High Mile Pines. And then it goes up the ditch, but all of those subdivisions, the Chesterfield subdivisions that went in there, none of them had that pathway. So there's close to two thousand feet there that that pathway can't go through. And yet, we're going to be on the one end building some and there's some on the other. I see the merit to it. I've kind of hard to see unless you maybe blow that up just a little bit where we can see the thank you. To see the side, I put a dotted green line that where that pathway sits on our site, but also the five acres that's to the east of us. When that development comes in and the city puts the same requirement, then that pathway can go there. And if they run a micro path up to the street, then they can cross the street and then cross Pine. And in that development in Pine, again, you see my dotted lines that go up through that common area. There's actually a bridge cross. There's actually a bridge crossing in there. Yep, that's it. That drops off into the park. There's a pathway that's along there also that 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 system connects into. So maybe the residents in my development aren't going to see that it's going to work. But overall, I can see the benefit in us at least doing our part if the neighbor next door has the same requirement. And so that's part of the challenge. There's been some discussion about Quarter Horse Lane. It's private and our clients have actually even worked with the Quarter Horse people in getting the right away to them so that they can put that as a part of their plans. And they've gotten their plan approval for that development, the construction plan approval from A C H D, as I understand. So that we know that that development is going to take place. Can we go to the next slide, please? You can see the Quarter Horse development that's there to the north and how you can come out of our development. When we had the neighborhood meeting, we had it right in front of the existing house, which one of the neighbors came up and said currently he's got snowmobile trailers and horse trailers. And he says he can't get out, trying to get out next to the railroad tracks and out on Black Cat. And he looks forward to these roads being built and being public so that he can get out onto Pine. And that would give him a straight shot. He He wasn't in opposition. It was actually a very, very comfortable meeting. They just wanted to know when, when things were going to happen. We Understand that it's good planning to stub to the property to the west. If we go to the next slide, we've kind of shown how that property could redevelop. That's a requirement that planning asks us to look at. It's not necessarily that they have to do it that way, but it at least shows that they might be able to do something. They could just hook on to where we're at and turn it into a cul-de-sac and then come in a short distance with a common driveway and probably accomplish the same thing and maybe not build as much road. Either way, it's about the only place that we can put the, the road stub because we have that Purdum drain that runs along the south and for us to get as much of that pathway in our design to that, to that location. Going through the conditions of approval on page nineteen, the, the one that Stacy read about our not being able to submit the final plat until we have a public access. I, I would just like to, I guess, the council to understand that to me, if I can get an easement from A C H D to cross that property, maybe the subdivision isn't recorded yet. I, I wouldn't even have thought of this a month ago, but recently I recorded or was in the process of recording a subdivision. The developer next door was building at the same time and they're both building at the same time and I'm faster. So I get to the county before this other guy does. And yet you drive out there, you can drive on the road and you can get to it, but they won't allow me to record it until I got a public access easement. So if the interpretation from staff of the condition that's written that I can submit when A C H D gives us some public access, whether that's an easement or not, and that's condition one D. I, I can see the merit instead of me having to wait for that subdivision to get recorded. They're not going to grant that easement. And me submitting a final plat, I still then have to get my plans approved. I still have to go through a hearing. There's a bunch of steps that are going to take place versus having it, the subdivision be recorded. Just having that understanding, I think, allows us to, to move forward and meet all of the requirements. I, I don't have anything else. I, I think that we've tried to do the best with what we've got and I'll stand for any questions.
I think you can't cancel any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Council on Pro.
So Kent, full disclosure, I lived on Newland in Chesterfield, four houses down from here for eleven years. It's very, very familiar with this entire area and traffic flows and, and everything. I'm curious where your, if you did start construction, start infrastructure, construction, excavation and whatnot prior to Horse Meadows, what access would you use? Is that what you're?
No, I'm not asking to do it before they're, they're doing it because they're bringing water and sewer.
Okay.
And we are working with them already. So we've been in close contact, at least my clients have, in discussing how to move both projects forward and participating and, and assisting each other. And that's about the only way that you can do infill is to, to make that happen. The street that runs along the bottom is Newland, which aligns up with the, your street that is to, to the east of us.
Mr. Mayor.
As one pro.
Was there a conversation with the Horse Meadows developers to take primary access from Pine rather than to use Quarter Horse Lane?
Yes.
It's a lot of concerns about, the neighbors are, excuse me, the, the folks who wrote in testimony are not wrong that that is, that is not a safe area to put an access to Black Cat. It's just too close between the railroad tracks and then you'd have Quarter Horse and then you'd have Pine and they're all within less of, less than a quarter mile. So what, yeah, can you share with us what, how that conversation went?
No one has approval to continue to use that existing private lane. A highway district won't allow it. You guys aren't allowing it. Quarter Horse has to do it as that previous slide that showed going out. That's a part of the construction plan that they've been working with. As you see what they're building, we, where we're adjacent to that roadway, we've been helping them with giving them the right away so that they can improve that road section that's adjacent to our site so that that gets done. Yeah, right in that area. So both developments, the access that goes directly to the north that the cursors are on, that's how both of them have to go out. We would have to come back before the council, both developments for anything else. And it wouldn't be supported by the highway district or planning department and shouldn't. Quarter, Quarter Horse Lane, as it exists, is exactly what you talked about, is not a safe location for it to come out on the Black Cat.
Council on the trailer.
I don't love it when the existing house stays and everything else develops around it. And then I feel like, okay, this one's hogging all the space. If we develop the whole thing at once, it probably wouldn't look like this. It's not the most egregious that I've seen, but give me an idea about how, how the existing home is going to blend in with the rest of the subdivision. In terms of aesthetically or?
It faces Quarter Horse Lane. We've done many of the ones like this. This is the first one that I've done that's been close to the street.
Are there trees and stuff along the, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind? I have, or is it, is it going to stick out like a sore thumb compared to all the other surrounding homes? Or is it, are there, you know, is there landscaping that sort of buffers it? Or how does that, how's that going to look?
Realistically, you're looking at the side view for the rest of the development. The front of the house faces Quarter Horse Lane. Currently there's like a circle driveway that is out there for, for where they currently park and so forth on that. I, I guess the, you know, the challenge comes is and we, and we've seen those property values go up and usually that kind of causes someone to maybe even think about moving the house. This, this house does have a basement in it. And the second story, so I would say that question comes with every developer that I ever worked with is, is it worth keeping the house? How does it fit into the neighborhood? The space between that house and any of the other neighbors takes place. And again, that's a challenge of doing infill.
Thank you.
Councilman Capper.
And can you, maybe either you or the last staff, give me some history on the, on the property to, to the west?
Have no clue.
Then talk to me a little bit that you've got this kind of like strip of open space that kind of bleeds over to it. Down here below that's, yeah, it's in the, in the striped.
Oh, we, we own thirty feet of frontage on Black Cat, but that thirty foot of frontage is all Purdum drain. So I go by today and we're required to put signs on our frontages. Well, that sign sits down in a hole because that is what we own. And it's, it would be on someone else's property, the, the house or the property that is directly to the west of us has a vinyl fence that runs all the way in along its frontage. But that's, that's that hatched area and that's not counted as a part of the open space. It's just we're not getting, we don't get any benefit from it, but we can't make it go away.
Councilman Capper.
And I think you, you speak to exactly was, I think, at least the question that came up in some of the written testimony that we had received or some people were confused as to why you're putting a noticing sign over there. And that's because you're doing that to comply with the law. And so I appreciate providing some of that clarification.
I, I get asked to do a lot of different things by the government. I used to use a word, my wife says that we don't let our kids say that word. So, but I get asked to do things and you just, it's on Stacy's list is what the problem is, so.
So Kent, I want to be upfront with you. I'm really struggling with this annexation. And so, and not that I think it's not, I, I think you used the word trying to be really creative and I think you've been really creative. Part of me feels like it's a little premature, particularly with, you know, I think Pine is surprisingly rated level C, I think from A C H D. I imagine that's going to change come this summer. As we're going to see, I think many of our residents use Pine, they're going to get off at ten mile to cut over, particularly at five o'clock and at nine in the morning. I've got lots of challenges with Black Cat, none of which are your fault, but we'll help to contribute towards that. And part of me feels, I, I think you, you use the term, and I think even the Planning and Zoning Commission referenced it as infill, and certainly there's some elements of that. To me, it just seems like too high of density in a small piece of dirt that has lots of complications when it comes to access. And even to your, to your point, not a lot of opportunity for pedestrian circulation to move people through. Anybody that's going to come in and out, this is going to use their car. I don't love that. So help me understand, because you do this a lot and you're the expert. The opportunity that you see in this and, and why we, the council should be considering this annexation right now?
You, you end up needing to put all the puzzles together. And there isn't anything, for example, that the current owner there puts the garage that you're asking and puts that on the house and that changes that house's value. And he sells to somebody and someone tries to split that and you guys make him do a short plat. That is kind of standard procedure as the amazing thing to me is that when I do, you know, and you do three hundred acres or two hundred acres and you're buying from a farmer and he's going, I can't live on anything less than five acres. And as soon as he has his five acres and neighbors start moving in, he's going, well, I don't like looking out what used to be my field and seeing houses. So it changes. And your codes kind of put enough restrictions. This meets the matrix for what the comprehensive plan is saying to go forth in this area. And we are working with pieces of property that in the past, people would have walked away from because you're paying a high price. This piece of property is paying a high price for Purdum drain property that they're not, they're going to mow weeds. That's, that's going to be their, their, their charge as long as they own it and, and moving forward. But if someone didn't do those pieces, then the road that everybody wants to be connected to the east doesn't take place. And if you don't, I mean, I don't know how many times I've heard the former mayor say, you know, if you didn't put that sidewalk in on one of your major roads, that, you know, if you didn't put it in, then how long are we not going to have it? And so those things have to kind of take place and you have to do it on those different pieces of property. And yes, could they go another ten years after this and neither neighbor that has the five acres change? Realistically, we're not impacting them. If we're doing anything, we're helping them and with Quarter Horse get to Pine Street, not stop using Quarter Horse Lane and helping the situation. You, I've had people ask me, you know, tell me where development's going to take place. Well, it follows the sewer. Well, we, we don't have access to the sewer unless Quarter Horse goes in next door. No one to the east of us has access to the sewer until we put it in. And so it's all those little tiny pieces that get put together that allow something to take place. Would it be a lot easier if you bought all of those pieces and, and you came in all at once? Yes. But we all have property rights. We all, I mean, I, I can point out properties another time and you and I can talk about them when someone should have sold sooner and now they're kind of stuck with where they're at. And at this point, it really doesn't affect either neighbor. So I, I would view what we're doing helps the area, helps the city grow in this part, portion of it, but at the same time has very little or low impact and helps the situation in getting people to Pine. Because that's where people need to come out is on Pine. The master plan calls for it being extended and going to the west into the industrial stuff. And we know that people currently want to get to the ten mile interchange. Right now they're having to drive to Black Cat, go up to Pine, drive down, turn around and come back to make that, that trip. Emergency services and everything else is going to be changed by what my other clients are doing, building that bridge and making that connection. Traffic, traffic patterns are going to change in that area. And that's And that's, how, how many developments do we hear the major concern is, is, is traffic? So that part's changing and yet traffic here, us and Quarter Horse are affecting each other. We're not really affecting our neighbors is what I, what I see when I look at this. That's a long answer and I, I apologize.
Mr. Mayor Kent, there was questions about that setting aside funds for remediation for the temporary turnaround area in that common lot 10. Is that?
That's fine. You're, you're good. That sounds reasonable. What the, what the concern of the Planning and Zoning Commission is that, is the HOI going to be stuck with paying for that temporary turnaround? You know, realistically, the, the difficulty of the city holding the funds is, you know, it could be 10 years if the neighbor to the west doesn't do anything. But if there's the funds, it's the funds. So what we're talking about is just picking up the asphalt and planting grass.
Councilwoman Pearl.
And so as you know, Pine on that section from the drain to Black Cat is really not set up to be a through street. There's no striping. There's no sidewalks on the south side for a good majority of it. Any idea if ACHD is going to actually, you know, make some improvements on there so that it, it does act as a two-way through street? It's just, it just is a essentially a subdivision street at this point. I mean, it's a public road, but it has behaved as an entrance to these two subdivisions solely for the last 15 years that they've been there. And now with the request to have two subdivisions accessing that section of Pine, which is my understanding of Horse Meadows goes in, they will run sidewalk. I don't know if they'll go all the way across the front of the private property to the east. So there'll be a gap where there's no sidewalk.
Exactly.
On the south side, there's a sidewalk all the way on the north side. So two questions essentially. If I understood you, I'm very bothered by how the traffic will flow in both of these, both of these potential subdivisions. I know you don't have any control over Horse Meadows. We had a lot of conversation with them about their, their, uh, road design as well. If I understand correctly, that emergency access there on the very southwest side, right there, that will stay emergency access. You're not, the, you aren't attempting to change that or request Horse Meadows to change that of any, of any kind. So why not line up bareback with their street that heads straight up to Pine? Rather than when the neighbor to the east develops, creating a challenge for them, that, that's going to kind of limit how they develop that southwest corner of their property.
From a planning standpoint, we want people to drive short distances. I mean, immediately, if you think about that, if we're all lined up, first of all, it makes a bigger challenge for me on my side to try to, I'm dodging that perdom drain. But we're, we're meeting offsets. And so with people having that street be offset and you have to stop and start, people are not traveling fast. If that was a straight shot and you came down to the bottom and then you align with Newland that goes all the way to the east, you would have kind of a thoroughfare of people driving that 2,000 feet on Newland and roughly somewhat, it does, it's not a, a through street. It's, it breaks that up. And from a planning standpoint, if I, if I owned everything and we were bringing that development, I still probably have what I'm doing here to offset that, to, to, to slow traffic down.
Council, additional questions for the applicant?
I, I would ask that maybe one of the things that the city council asked Planning and Zoning to do is to look at incentives for developers to develop these types of properties. Boise City has a kind of, they used, they've always had a one-time land division, even when I worked there, where you could split a piece of property into four pieces, kind of like your short plat process. But to curb urban sprawl, you need to take your downtown core and create more density. And if there's incentives for, for people to make that process easier, generally all the rules that you're seeing and the new things that are coming forward are in these bigger subdivisions and the amenities and so forth are involved. But yet your city services, police and fire are still driving down those existing streets. And if there was one more unit in there or something like that in your neighborhoods of your existing area, I see that that would be a benefit. Because these are a challenge. You wouldn't think that we would maybe have four or five designs on this.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can we have anyone send to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to come forward and provide testimony on this item? And last time I checked, I didn't, I guess we do have someone coming forward. Listen. And if there's going to be online, you can use, raise your hand. Go and say your name and, no, you're good. Say your name and add just for the record.
Brent Alexander, 4575 West Quarter Horse Lane, Meridian, Idaho. So I am the current occupant of the existing house.
If you can speak into one of the mics.
I, I'm the current occupant of the existing house that we want to maintain. And there were some questions about landscape. I have many mature trees around my house, big ash trees, big silver maples. My, my circle driveway will be eliminated when the easement comes through and they do that road up to the edge of my property. And at that point, it will be curb and gutter and fence and just like a regular house front. The garage I plan to put on it will be on the, I'll actually access off of the road to my east. And it will attach to my garage to the left side of my house, kind of the way my house is kind of angled. It'll come in there, I'll build the garage there and that'll actually be my driveway. And that's, that's kind of the plan to, to do that. And, you know, the fence that's required, like every other neighbor that has, except my neighbor to the east's pasture fence will remain the same, but I'll do the same fence standard that all the other houses will be required in the subdivision. So I just wanted to speak to that to let you know what the plans for that piece of property are going for. Should Lindon with, it's, it's not a full, it's not a single story house on a basement. It's a daylight basement house. So it's kind of the, the basement's kind of half up. So it's a split entry with the daylight basement. So I believe it'll, it'll blend well. And, and really at the end of the day, nobody's going to see it except the Casey's who live at the end of the lane and the Morgans who come out of their driveway. Neighborhood will see of the new garage, the landscape. I just wanted to speak to that.
Council, any questions? Is there anybody else who'd like to provide testimony on this item? And will the applicant like to come forward to close? And applicant is waving.
Mr. Mayor. I suppose we can have the discussion leave the public hearing open cases for the question that comes up for the applicant to, to, to answer. Yeah, infill is always difficult and Mr. Brown has, has done some infill projects before that, that fit the need and they're thoughtfully planned and, and, and make it work. I think the big thing is we definitely need to have that access point that's going to be in, in the other subdivision at that time. I, I don't have any objection to having that submit final plat upon ACHD's granting an easement. If this were to go forward, I mean, it makes sense as long as the road is there and is built to the standard that ACHD requires. How the timing comes out, it's going to be used by both parties at, at some point in time. And there's also a request, council waiver to allow the perdom gulch drain to remain open and natural state. And I believe it's natural all the way down headed east already. So it would be unusual to have it covered in this, in this situation. And I think there's some wild turkeys on the part you don't own. So I've driven by there and did a double take, so. 26, they can do some damage, you know, to your, to your garden. But I saw one on Schindin Saturday by, by Spurwing crossing the road. Why did the turkey cross the road? Well, it did barely, it made it by lanes. But yeah, in, in Phil, it is, I think Kent described it as a, you know, everything is a puzzle piece. And how do you make that fit? And sometimes we like the fit, sometimes we don't. I'm not sure where this one will end up in, in, in the council's final decision, but I'm, I'm okay with this fit. It's, it works with the property that's to the north that allows that access. It's the right density. It fits the development that's on that eastern side of Black Cat. I know some of the folks on the west side with the higher density or lower densities, bigger properties don't like it. But to me, that Black Cat Road is a, is a dividing line there. So I think that kind of makes a difference. Because we had that discussion with, with the other developments and what, what existed there and going north and how things fit and where the roads fit and that sort of thing. So, you know, I, I, you know, I'm, my mind's always open. If council members have real concerns, that might change my mind. I'm willing to listen, but I'm not, not necessarily opposed to moving forward with this project.
Mr. Mayor. Got to agree that these five acre infills are tough. In fact, Mr. Brown and I have a history on five acre infill property that was tough. I look at the fact that we're talking about 24 units and a density of 4.59. And I think I'd rather be facing that and what he's come up with right now than a potential down the road of seeing something come in that's a much higher density that we don't want. And in reviewing this from every angle, because there's a lot of angles on this five acres. I think he's done about as good a job as you can do, given all the restrictions on this lot. And I'd be in support of it.
Councilwoman Strater.
I think it's well thought out. I appreciate him working with the property owner to the north to figure out the connections and work together on bringing services. And I, I think that kind of an approach makes infill a little more palatable. I'd like staff's feedback on whether they're okay with the final plat when ACHD grants an easement. That feels like a departure from our normal process and that always makes me nervous. So I'd like to get some feedback from staff on that. I don't have a lot of energy around the drain. That's fine. I do agree, we have a transportation challenge in general in this area. But it feels like the connectivity is part of the answer. And it's not as bad as some areas we've seen. But if, if you don't mind, if staff could comment on, on that final plat point, I'd like to hear their feedback.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater. As far as that condition request, I have not had experience on any other projects requesting that. So whether that is a negative thing, I am not sure. We, I don't see that happening a lot. We don't get too many of these.
Mr. Neri, do you have a viewpoint on that topic? And was not to the final plat at the time that's been recommended?
Yeah, I really, I really don't, I mean, I kind of where Kent was at was the timing is really going to be tied to the adjoining property anyway. So I, I guess I'm not really concerned what Mr. Brown was asking for versus what the staff's asking. So I don't know that either one of them is going to be a wrong decision. So I'm, I'm not concerned about it. So.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm sharing.
So just to think out loud, I guess the kinds of things I would be concerned about, maybe for feedback from Mr. Neri would be, was there any possibility that ACHD grants the easement? And then the development to the north brings services, but then doesn't ultimately complete its project? Or I don't know if this is for feedback from him or from staff, but like what kinds of risks could happen in that scenario? I just don't know enough about it, what our normal process is compared to waiving that condition. I'm not saying that we, I guess in the other, the other thing I would say is I, I didn't hear a hugely compelling reason why you thought that was super important to deviate from our normal process. Maybe that's a good place to start, just because I feel like we should always use a consistent process. At any time that we are not using a consistent process, and I know the wheels of government are grinding you down, man. But if you could just please give us some feedback.
I, I got to admit that I was totally shocked that I had to do this. But it states on the document and what they do is they go to the landowner that is in the process of getting his plat recorded. And they say that they give a description, which would be that connection to Pine. They would call that out and say, you are okay with this being a public access until the plat's recorded. What, what the, the wheels of justice, if you will, is that it's officially not a public right of way until the plat gets recorded. So since it's not public, it's owned by the landowner that is doing the development. He has to consent to it and ACHD has to sign off on it. What I started envisioning as Stacy was reading it, I, I hadn't even thought of it before. But because I just had this experience and it's in STAR that you guys are stopping me from submitting a final plat, which then you guys start looking at my plans for approval. I'm going to be in at ACHD. We're not getting plan approval in 30, 40 days. It's more like 40, 50 days. So you guys, me getting to a final plat hearing can take some time. I'm looking at all of those things are going to be done by the time that the plat gets recorded, but it's going to save me three or four months. And we have a construction season. There's a time to build and there's a time not to. And if we can get in and get the plans approved, then we can start moving forward. And versus me waiting until it's totally recorded, I technically, without changing the condition, I could probably present this to planning staff and convince them that the way that it's written is taken care of. But I thought, well, if I raise the issue and say, really upfront, if, if need be, if I get this public access easement that ACHD, you know, would grant to this piece of property, everybody's recognizing that there's, there's some kind of surface that we can drive on. Whether we're, we're not going to be using it until most likely, because we're not getting plans approved very quickly anymore.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm sharing.
Aren't you sort of taking a risk? Because you're assuming that your neighbor is going to record that final plat, right at that point? What if something happens?
The highway district is, i- if they don't record the plat and I have a public access, it's, it's not just for construction.
Right?
So I guess when you've spent your money, y- the only way that you get your money back is by recording your plat. Where you can start to sell. I mean subdivision process, according to our, our, our local planning act, is a legal means of subdividing the ground and creating something that's sellable. Can't sell it in smaller pieces until you record it. So developers get really anxious when they put a million dollars out. That money's not doing them any good until they get their plat recorded. So they get real anxious about that. So if they're in that process, they're going to record. And I, I don't worry about that part. I just worry about me maybe missing a window for the construction season because I had to wait four months because maybe they didn't have bonding capabilities for the city's improvements with landscaping or whatever. But they're going to build it all.
Mr. Mayor.
That's my one.
So for public safety, so fire protection, that, that access would still have to be approved by fire. So it's, it's not like, oh, this is kind of sketchy how to access the point. So to get in for your final plat, I, I'm thinking of a scenario then that where the climate we're in, the developer moves forward, and this is more going back to the 08, 09 era, where they get in the sewer and water, they get in the streets and then their funding source dried up. You know, their streetlights, the whole bit. And we saw a little bit of that back then where things were there, but no one was building a thing. And you, on the other hand, might have that funny if that were happened there. You have your funding, you build your project, you're ready for final plat. That would allow you then, because they didn't get their final plat, that, that's not done.
But I have access.
But you have access, everything is done to code and ACHD can give you that approval, that easement access that would allow you and it would meet our requirements for fire.
And that's a very worst case scenario, but we've seen it. Hopefully we never see it again, because that was.
Bad times, yes.
Yeah. Uh, my dad talked about the depression, that was as close as I want to get to it. But it, it would allow us that access. You guys basically do the same thing every time that you ask me to give you a pedestrian pathway easement. And you're saying developer and HOA, we're going to allow the public to walk on this because you're going to give us an easement. And we, we do that. This is doing the same thing is that the public's going to be able, because it's written, it's a public access easement. I can provide staff with a copy of it, because I could probably even email, because I have it on my phone. But we just did one, so. But the document allows that access for the public. Because what, what the condition of approval says, I'm not allowed to submit my final plat until I have public access. It's not saying that that subdivision to the north has to be recorded. So technically what I'm asking isn't changing that condition of approval. I'm just acknowledging before you that you understand that I might approach that public access through an easement because that plat's not recorded. And.
Ms, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
So I guess if, it doesn't sound like planning has an issue. I guess I'm looking to legal. If you don't feel that that in some way infringes on the property rights, the adjacent property in some way by the city, then I'm fine.
So Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so the, the public access easement, I think Kent hit it on the head. I mean, the, the only difference is the easement is a grant of use of the land by the property owner. But it has to be voluntary, we're not requiring him to do it. We're requiring Kent to work that out and Mr. Brown and his client to work that out with that property owner and with ACHD and with the fire department. So there's an improved road surface that is usable by fire trucks and cars. So from a legal standpoint, I don't see that the property owner of that adjacent property that's trying to subdivide has any redress against the city, because we, we can't make that person do anything. And so he's either going to do this as a means to facilitate the process of their development or he's not. If he doesn't grant it, then Mr. Brown can't build his subdivision because he has no access to get to it. So, yeah, I don't see a real risk to the city to allow what Mr. Brown's requesting.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Sherr.
Thank you, it sounds like there's not really a concern and you have a good reason that you need it, which is saving time. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
So sometimes everything can look good on paper and dot the i's and cross the t's and timing still isn't great. I don't, I don't have significant opposition to the development as it is, the way the, the plat's designed, but I have a lot of concern about just flow of traffic and access and timing in regard to the development of the property to the north um, and Pine Avenue and what's going to happen with Pine Avenue. So let's anticipate that construction trucks are coming into both of these developments on the one entrance. And they're coming in off of Black Cat where we have a very short distance to access the road or access the entrance in the north. There is a bus stop across the street from the entrance on Pine, where both of these will be accessing um, with elementary school children. There's no striping uh, on Pine at all to, to delineate where the cars are supposed to turn on either Black Cat, there's no right turn lane on Black Cat, there's no left turn lane on Black Cat um, into, onto Pine, and there's no striping whatsoever on Pine to indicate where vehicles are supposed to go. And as we talked about with Horse Meadows, that's, we, we, we can encourage them strongly to put that access to the far east side of their development, which they did, still knowing that we weren't a hundred percent comfortable with the distance to Black Cat. And now we're going to have construction trucks coming into both of these developments for two years without Pine having any kind of, I mean, I mean, it's, it just, it looks like a, a subdivision street. That there's nothing on there that indicates where vehicles are, at any given time when you're, uh, when Pine vehicles are heading west and they are, they are accessing Black Cat, there's three vehicles typically lined up. One, um, one to go left, one to go straight and one to go right. And there's no turn lanes whatsoever to indicate. So you have cars that are constantly trying to get around each other to take a right, because they don't want to wait for the vehicle that's taking a left. And you're going to have construction trucks coming in for not just 24 units, but you're going to have it coming in for Horse Meadows. And then you're going to have a bus stop and then you're going to have no sidewalks on one side. That is just a disaster, a safety disaster waiting to happen. So I'm not saying that this is, that I'm not opposed to the infill. I think they did a really great job with what that small amount of space they have. They're within, they're in line with the, with the density and comp plan and the zoning. But until there's some improvements to Pine and we have some understanding of kind of how the traffic will flow once that bridge is done, I just have a lot of hesitancy. I realize these guys aren't going to start actually constructing homes for another year, probably. But there's just so much going on. Personally, I don't think you're going to see a lot of people trying to, to take Pine and then Elgato to get to McDermott. I don't anticipate that, that Elgato is going to have a ton more traffic from coming through. 100% Pine is going to have traffic coming through. And um, there is, there's no pedestrian safety setup in that area whatsoever. So I, I just have concerns about the timing of having two developments so close together, both developing, construction vehicles coming in, no signage, large vehicle cement trucks coming in, stopping as they're making a right-hand turn. Vehicles are literally going to be backing up into Black Cat during rush hour on both sides of the street. And there's no turn lanes, there's no striping, there's no sidewalks. You get the, I think you get the big picture. So is that our responsibility? I, 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 I would have really have liked to have seen the applicant bring, um, bring the, um, the engineer in from Horse Meadows. I think her name is Peggy Penny. Um, I would really have liked to have seen something in writing from them or had to have brought her to this meeting to get a clear understanding of what their timing looks like as well. I would like, I would like more, I'm not comfortable approving this at this time. That doesn't mean I can't get there, but I just need more information about what's going to happen with Pine, how it's going to be handled with a new traffic that will be coming through and then, and then the timing of Horse Meadows.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm sharing.
Could we hear from the applicant on the timing of improvements on Pine? And I mean, it's not your responsibility, but clearly it's a key factor. I'm, I'm sitting here like getting this feedback, like yikes, sounds like a mess, so.
So I, I'm going to start at a different place. So when I get a Plumeri plat approved, I got two years to submit a final. Um, I can ask for a time extension of that. So as recently stated, understanding that it's not going to happen immediately. It, at, at the same time, we have to wait for Horse Meadows. Because that's where the water and sewer is. It's not like we can ignore that they're there and that that takes place. When I was working on the developments that are currently building the bridge, uh, both Foxcroft and High Mile Pines, when we met with ACHD, they said this is dramatically going to change the traffic on Pine. Because currently, a lot of the traffic that is on Black Cat are people that are having to drive around and that's where the 5,000 vehicle trip came up. Is that deliveries and everything else, people are having to come to, to Black Cat to access this. And they said as soon as that is a through connection, it is a highway district collector. Collectors are three lanes, they got one lane in each direction and they got a turning lane in the center. Hopefully they will stripe it. I mean, if, if I have to ask for a time extension on, on my Plumeri plat, hopefully in two years with a meeting or two from the, you, the priorities are, are set by uh, the, the council that, to help the highway district understand where, where that money goes. What I tell neighbors when I have the fun neighborhood meetings that I'm required to do is if you have a traffic issue, go talk to the highway district. You guys are paying taxes. And if you see this being a problem, then they, they can have monies for that. Yes, there's going to be this section, there's those sections all over town of people that are in the county that uh, don't have sidewalk. Timing wise, uh, if it was a year ago and we were talking about this and we didn't have high, high interest rates, I would say that the quarter horse people would be building it immediately as soon as the weather would allow them. I, I don't know what that is. I know that my clients is speaking to them, they're, they're thinking about that. But again, I can't, I can't go anywhere until they start doing something. It would be very highly optimistic that we're even doing them uh, even close to each other. Because even with my request, most likely we're going to be in two different construction seasons. They're going to be building units at the same time that we're trying to do the dump trucks and so forth to, to do the roads. So that, that timing generally don't bring neighbors to, to the development. I mean, um, we, we have to kind of be patient. Um, and again, that's part of the challenge of, of what we're doing. My clients immediately contacted the Horse Meadows people um, prior to submitting the application, just to understand, you know, what, what they were thinking about doing and trying to get some grasp whether they should submit now or submit a little bit later. They felt confident enough to at least submit, we get approved. And then we, we still have to wait for them to construct.
Mr. Mayor.
That's my one.
Kent, you talked about the bridge and having that construction portion completed in sometime in April before water comes in. But the actual then opening, having that Pine Street open from 10 Mile to Black Cat, what's your estimate when that's going to happen?
At least the first of May. And, and the reason being is that they, it's a precast. So they had to prep the bed, they have to have that in place for the water to be flowing down. And then the aprons and everything else that go with that bridge are part of the precast that go in. But it is paving those last sections to, for that bridge to go in, that's the part. And when, when are the plants going to open up and when are we going to be pouring asphalt? But the intent from, from my clients is that they need to get that thing built and highway district wants it built.
So Mr. Mayor and Kent, I guess the reason why I wanted to have that in my mind was the fact that, and that road is going to be connected and open for at least a year before anything major is starting to happen. And in ACHD, that's one thing they do recognize. If there are issues in Pine and not turn lanes and there's confusion, they don't want confusion in our roads. They will have to take some sort of action if that's, that's happening. So hopefully before this is even, you know, we're several years out before occupied parcels, that should be resolved, I, I would think.
I, I would think so too. The, the other parts that you, you look at, you, you look at the 10 Mile interchange and the connection that Pine has there and what we've already constructed. There is turning lanes, there is all of the striping, they've asked us to do that portion. Why aren't they doing that on Black Cat? Well, part of the reason is, is that Black Cat isn't at its full width. So they've got to wait for some of those improvements to go in. And again, if it's a priority that they do that, but they want to see what the numbers change when the bridge goes in also. Because then they'll have a more accurate amount of the people coming and going. But you look at traffic patterns, people are coming from the freeway generally. I mean, I don't drive out that way except maybe to go down Black Cat a, a little bit further. Because, I mean, from there, you're going to Nampa and what's going on there. But 10 Mile is where most of the people are, are commuting, except those that can't, can't get to Pine currently.
And Mr. Mayor.
That's my one.
Yeah, and just to follow up, he may not be aware, but at our last prioritization meeting, that when we looked at our roadways, we moved Black Cat up to number 20, I believe, 19 or 20, saying it's, it's, we want it on that kind of immediate list of concerns because of compass. They got the big intersection at Franklin and, and Black Cat, and then you just narrow down to two lanes, no turn lanes to the schools. Of course, the uh, railroad tracks will need to be widened and you got the Purdum Drain Bridge. No turn lanes, as, as Councilwoman Pearl has pointed out, going into Pine. Yeah, so there's, there's work that needs to be done, the traffic's already there. And so hopefully ACHD recognizes that and can, if they get the funding, move that up. Money's always an issue.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I don't recall when we did the prioritization, which section of Black Cat that we had prioritized. I think it was just from Franklin to the tracks. This is north of the tracks. Do you recall, Council President?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Pearl, I, I think we ended up making it the whole from Cherry to Franklin.
Typically they're one mile segments, yes.
Mr. Mayor.
That's my pro.
In the traffic report for this application, right now, that's not slated to be widened to five lanes till 2031 to 2035. So if ACHD doesn't prioritize that, that's how far out we are on getting any kind of, you know, I, I'm not even expecting a right turn lane um, onto Pine. Just, um, really my concern, safety concern is more on Pine than it is on Black Cat, but there's no striping on Pine whatsoever. Just really, my concern, safety concern is more on pine than it is on Black Cat, but there's no striping on pine whatsoever. And I I'm not comfortable with giving entitlements to annexing and giving entitlements to this project until we do have more information about what ACHD is going to do with pine. So I think if we were hearing this application later in the year, after we've seen some traffic and we we know it's possible, they already, obviously, they're aware that this is going to be connected in a couple of months. I would like to know from them what their plans are to turn that into a true collector, because right now it doesn't, while it may have the width of an intended collector, it's not functioning as one in any capacity. So I would prefer to see that that's the timing of that, not even necessarily that it's done, but the timing of it prior to agreeing agreeing to annexing this.
But Councilwoman Schrader, I'm a good counter. And I can tell where two and two are. And it's getting close to your pumpkin time. So I don't know where you think you would like this to go tonight or not.
Yeah, I'm I'm concerned. Councilwoman Perro, I think, brought up some kind of important new points about the state of pine. I'd love it if the applicant wanted a continuance to get more feedback from ACHD. Come back to us. I have a lot of I have concerns. I share Councilwoman Perro's concerns.
I think I think we could ask for a continuance, but instead of me getting information, if a highway district person would come and I mean, what I ask him might not be what you you want asked. I view the traffic is going to be a lot better, but being a planner, I guess I'm a little more optimistic. Or maybe it's just doing this a long, long time. I I don't see anything happen quickly. I mean, sat down with we blocked for Brad as a quarterback, me and this friend of mine, he was the center and I was guard. And we were talking about the growth and he just says, well, why can't they build all the roads the way that they're they're going to be? And you just go, it's not our funding mechanism. That's just not how that works. And tried to explain how those priorities come into play. So I know that it's confusing, but I think if you had an ACHD representative and if that makes you feel better about the application, because realistically, there's nothing I can do about it. It's going to be what it's going to be. I just know that my gut tells me that I'm not I'm not building this in 2023 and it might be late 2024 before it happens. And a lot to pine could and a lot to Black Cat could be taking place before that time takes place. That people are going to change how they drive. I live next to the busiest road in the state. I'm one house away. And I know when there's times when I go out there and there's times when I don't. The people currently on pine don't have an option. They have one place that they can go and the only way that they can go. So they have to battle that Black Cat intersection. They're going to have an option. It's going to be different. So they're going to see a change in traffic and they're going to change how they go. It used to be that we could go down Locust Grove and it was just a dead end road, but Meridian City Council and Jay Build and so forth, putting that overpass in, that's changed our lives. So it's a lot busier closer to my home on the other end. But that those things happen and that's a part what's we're going to see in the future here. So if you want to continue this meeting and have staff ask that are represented from ACHD come prepared to speak to pine, I I'm, that's what I was asking my client. Is I think that's going to make a lot more of you feel more comfortable. Really isn't, I mean, I could speak more to my design and why I did. You know, why didn't I line a whole bunch of houses on the west side? Well, we try not to impact that property with as many houses just backing up to them. But anyway.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I'd like to, yes, I would like to hear from ACHD. If they have a representative on the phone, that would be wonderful. As long as, of course, that representative is aware of what we're asking and has that information available to us. Second thing I'd like to to know is either also having a representative from Horse Meadows or a letter from that representative giving us some information on timing. The last, you know, the the their their property was entitled in December of 2020. There's been no movement on it. The last time that we spoke with them, there was there were issues with agreements from the neighboring properties for access to Quarter Horse Lane. We I still don't know where that was left. I assume some of it's been resolved because you're here with this application now. So I just I would like some more detailed information. That's that's not going to that information will be helpful, but it it won't be like I won't, you know, I won't deny your your application because of it, but it just would be helpful to have that. And so those two things I'd really like for you to have when you come back after the continuance and and oh, one more question amenities. You had stated that pathways and picnic shelters were going to be amenities. Staff report says those are the two amenities. But then in your testimony this evening, you said the pathways go nowhere. So how should we consider that an amenity?
It is your required 10 foot regional pathway that I'm putting installing. That's according to your code is viewed as an amenity. You know, if it was just a pathway in a subdivision, most likely we'd make it like six foot wide. But this is one that I grant and give you an easement to and built according to your standards. So it ends up being wider, bigger, more costly. The the hard sell of, again, of infill is convincing that the the owners that they're paying for the maintenance of something that goes nowhere. But is it where we would put a pathway? Probably not, but it is the long term, understanding the planning that will take place in the future. They'll get benefit then. It's it's like building a sidewalk to nowhere. A bridge to nowhere type deal.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Um, thank you for clarifying that that was not what you were presenting as amenity. For we often have applicants that come in and present that as an amenity and and request that we consider it to be such, but I understand. Personally, I don't think that a picnic shelter is going to do a lot of good for these folks that I wouldn't, that wouldn't be the amenity that I think that folks would actually use in this area. Are there any other amenities that you considered?
Pickleball is really popular right now, that kind of stuff. But again, what what do we see most people doing? Picnic shelter does become one of those places. If your lot, you don't have a big, huge lot, at least it's a place that you can have a birthday party at with the picnic shelter and the tables and so forth that are there that makes that a very reasonable and beneficial. I would say probably the most beneficial that you could do here in this location.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Nolan. Yeah, Ken, looking at dates and trying to figure out, it's it's kind of a, you know, little dart throw, you know, April 11th, 18th, 25th, you know. And it's a matter of getting someone from ACHD here. So I don't know if we want to confer with what a a Mr. Clerk did was the fourth also an option? Yes, April 4th would be the soonest.
My client did say that he could speak to the horse medals and their their kind of timeframe. He has spoke to them if you want to hear that tonight. I think the first part of April. I'm worth a little later in April. I guess I should be here. Here and my wife wants me to go on vacation.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Nolan.
And yeah, the fourth, I checked with clerk, April 4th is the earliest we could go. Or or later, 18th, 25th.
Yes, to 18th.
Okay. And um, I think that they want to hear from your the applicant on the horse.
You want to hear that?
Yeah, Lisa, that way it will be on the record and maybe resolve that, maybe not.
Sorry, it's all microphone.
Good, say your name and address for the record.
Ben Needler, 5571 North Glenwood in Boise. So I I have a representative of the development group that's working on this project and I was tasked to have been involved with talking with the horse medals folks over the last year. The last update I received from them is they do have a horizontal partner that's going to start doing development here yet this year. We coordinated with them, obviously, on the layout of the subdivision, in fact, worked with ACHD on granting. If you look at the if you look where the where the park is and the lots that are north of the park. That prop our property then at least used to go straight across. And we had to give them some right of way so that they could make Quarter Horse Lane an actual ACHD roadway. So ACHD is well aware of what's going on in here and in our conversations. It's all laid out according to that. So maybe that answers some of the questions on ACHD's involvement and knowing what's going on in subdivision. As far as the connectivity of the pathways, I think what Kent was talking about is the the big path going along the south end. But the the developers, I was sitting in the meetings, listening to them, the fact that those paths connect to the north and through the park, and they're trying to get them people folks up to right of way and sidewalk to keep them connected to other neighborhoods was the plan. So I hope that helps answer your question or not.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Actually, I I was curious about the timing of so they have a partner. You you mean they have a building partner? They have, they're just getting financing?
No, I spoke to the party that that they they believe to the best of their knowledge. And again, I'm getting this, I'm secondhand at this point, but that their their plans are to start this year. I don't know if that's tomorrow or in six months, but
Okay.
And if you'd like, I can try and get an update on that. That'd be probably the best and we can try and bring that back at the next.
Councilman Pro.
Yes, please do. I'd like to know when they start moving dirt, when they anticipate the road sidewalks, curb gutter, street lights, infrastructure done. And then when they anticipate their first house to be built and and then that information relationship to your timing is what I'd like to know.
Okay, I can ask those questions.
Thank you.
Bet.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Nolan. I would move that we continue the public hearing for Alexander subdivision, Alexander Landing subdivision H 2022 dash 0084 until April 18th.
Second.
A motion seconds to continue the public hearing. Is there a discussion? If not, I'm favor seeing if I by saying I.
Hi.
I close day. As habit and the hearing is continued. Thank you very much. Without, we will move on to item two, which is ordinance number 23 dash 2010. Let's court read the disorders by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's ordinance related to Turn Plaza H 2022 0063 for a rezone of a parcel of land being all of Lot 2, Block 6, Bridgetower Crossing subdivision number two in the Ada County Recorder's Office and Book 86 at pages 9,461 through 9,463. Situated in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 35 Township 4 North Range 1 West Boise Meridian, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. More particularly described in Exhibit A, rezoning 1.8 acres of land from R4 Medium Low Density Residential Zoning District, LO Limited Office Zoning District in the Meridian City Code. Directing city staff to alter all land, all use and area maps, as well as the official zoning maps and all official maps depicting the boundaries and the zoning districts of the city of Meridian in accordance with this ordinance. Writing copies of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Council. You've heard this spread in by a title that's like it written in its entirety. If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I move that we approve ordinance number 23 dash 2010.
Second. Have a motion to approve item two, order December 23 dash 2010. Is there a discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader, Overton.
Hi.
Hi.
Cavanagh.
Hey.
O'Glin.
Hi.
All eyes motion carries. I'm just agree to. Next up is item three, which is ordinance number 23 dash 2011. Let's court read the disorders by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance related to Matador State subdivision H 2022 0043 annexing a portion of Lot 5 of Crestwood subdivision number one and located in northeast one quarter of the northeast one quarter of Section 31 Township 4 North Range 1 East Boise Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. More particularly described in Exhibit A, rezoning 5.09 acres of such real property from RUT to R4 Zoning District. Directing city staff to alter alter all use scenario maps, as well as the official zoning maps and all official maps depicting the boundaries and zoning districts of the city of Meridian in accordance with this ordinance. Writing the copies of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, repealing conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Council. You've heard the disorder spread by title. Is there maybe like it written in its entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve ordinance number 23 dash 2011.
Second.
I have a motion second to prove order number 23 dash 2011. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Mr. Mayor, who was the second? I didn't hear that. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Schrader.
Hi.
Overton.
Hi.
Pro.
Hi.
Cavanagh.
Hi. Hi.
All eyes motion carries. Yeah, I'm just great to council anything on our future meeting topics. And Ms. Councilwoman Nolan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Nolan.
I move that we go into executive session per Idaho code 74 dash 206B.
I have a motion second to go in executive sessions. Any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Hey.
Overton.
Hi.
Pro.
Hi.
Cavanagh. O'Glin.
Hi.
All eyes motion carries. We'll go into executive session.